And we are getting ready to go live.
Jack, do you have a question? Are we still trying to work through the?
And we should be live.
I don't know if Jack can unmute or not.
He should be able to. All were were given permission to. So if one of you can, it should be all of you can.
All right, let's make sure that we have everybody councilized and able to talk. Can I hear from Councilmember Nurr before we begin?
Yep, I'm here.
Councilmember Nichols?
I'm here.
Councilmember Oris?
He's showing that he's unmuted, but I'm not hearing anything.
All right, we'll come back to him. Councilmember Purnell?
I'm here.
Okay, Councilmember Burrell? All right, so so far I've not heard from Councilmember Burrell or Oris. Are they both on the call with us?
As far as I can tell.
I see Dean and I see Jack, but I can't hear either one of them. Let's try.
All right, I've specifically asked Jack to unmute.
Can you hear me now?
Yeah.
You can hear you now, yeah. All right, so I'm gonna try to mute myself again.
Let's see.
And for everybody that's joining us on Facebook, thank you for dealing with our technical difficulties. We're still working. Councilmember Burrell? All right, so let's begin this evening for our regularly scheduled mayor and council meeting for Monday, March 8th, 2021. For everyone that's joining us virtually, please understand that we'll accept public comment and comments from the press at the end of the meeting. The public comment and questions from the press will only be taken via Zoom. We will take that in writing via the chat feature or by raising your hand and then Mary will unmute you and and you're welcome to speak to us. With that being said, before you provide any written or verbal comment or question, we do ask that you state your name for the record and then your property address. And we'll remind you of this again as we get to that portion of the meeting. So please join me in a moment of silence and then we'll follow that by the Pledge of Allegiance. Thank you. Please join us in the Pledge of Allegiance once Mary gets her flag up there. All right, thank you. I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the republic under God, indivisible, with liberty, just for. Thank you. All right, so let's go on to agenda item number, or actually, hold on, I almost fell out of order here. I talked to Town Administrator Fleetwood this evening and we're joined by our new Public Works Superintendent Jimmy Charles, and he's gonna be taking over once Dave Wheaton is leaving us because of his retirement. So I'm gonna turn it over to Jeff and then we'll start with agenda item 1A. Okay, can't mute. Are you going to Mary? Thank you, everyone. This evening has been a technical issue after a technical issue, but we'll get through it. It's okay. And Jeff, we can always go to agenda item 1A, get the the minutes approval finished and then we'll tie back in and get back to you and Mr. Jimmy Charles. So let's.
All right, we're good.
Oh, you're good. All right.
Good now. How about checking on Jay Nurr as well?
Okay.
Are you able to unmute?
All right, so typically what we do is we ask everybody to mute themselves when they're not speaking. How about everybody unmute? And let's just try to make sure that we don't have a whole lot of background noise. That way, if you have a question, you can you can pose that at any time. We can hear you, yes. So as you're going through the unmuting process, Jeff, please introduce Mr. Jimmy Charles.
Yes, sitting to my left, Jimmy, raise your hand. Jimmy Charles began employment the first of 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 March with the town of Berlin as our new Public Works Superintendent, and I'd like for him to introduce himself.
Thank you, Jimmy. Hello, I'm Jimmy Charles. Very excited to be here, Mayor Tindall, Town Council. And Jeff has been great. Everyone here through the town hall, yeah, town hall has been very welcoming. Other department heads have been very encouraging and welcoming too. So I'm very excited to get started with working with the town of Berlin.
Welcome, Jimmy Charles.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jimmy. And I understand you're gonna be staying on with us throughout the remainder of the meeting. So once we get to department head reports, we can always say a little bit more to Jimmy and and that department when when they report out. So let's move on to agenda item number 1A, the approval of the regular session minutes from February 22nd, 2021.
Motion to approve.
So I have a motion by Councilmember Oris. I'm looking for a second. So I have a second by Councilmember Burrell, Councilmember Nurr, how do you vote?
Yeah.
Councilmember Nichols, how do you vote?
Yeah.
Councilmember Purnell, how do you vote?
Aye.
All right, so the minutes for February 22nd, 2021 pass unanimously with all council members present. All right, so agenda item number 2A and 2B are both discussion items for the mayor and council. So a while back, I think it was in November of 2020, we shifted from a modified in-person presence for mayor and council meetings and boards and commissions to this virtual Zoom venue. It's been filled with its with its navigation of technical issues this evening being an example, but I I think we've done well and kept many people safe, but with the numbers trending lower, it's across the state and the county benchmark of COVID data have passed below the 5% threshold for positivity rate. So that's the benchmark we originally set out. So up for discussion this evening, we separated the mayor and council from the boards and commission meetings simply because the mayor and council have several public hearings and things of that nature that are are probably going to have more in-person or public comment associated with it. So we felt it was better to break those two apart. So I would like to first consider and ask the council because we've we've been discussing this at the administrative level, but I I really would like to hear some council feedback on this. Option 1, and and if somebody else sees a different option, go ahead and pose it, but option 1 is to to go to a modified in-person presence like what we had before, where everybody would be socially distanced and masked at town hall. And with this option, we'd have a limited number of people that could attend our meetings in person. I believe the occupancy level outside of the mayor and council is 16 people, but that does include our our department heads. So during times when we have heavy department head staffing, that need to be present for a particular item, it would limit the number of people that we could have present at that time. With this option, we'd switch away from being on Zoom and it would go back to a Facebook streamed only. With that being said, you would have to own the only medium for public comment would be either the participants that are allowed in the building under the reduced density or those that type in a response or a question via Facebook during the time of a public hearing. The second option is to continue with what we're doing now via Zoom just through the budget cycle, at which time then we could come back to a that modified in-person presence. So that is a discussion item. I I'd be very interested to hear what the council has to say about that. And I don't, just to preface, I don't think anyone is a correct or the only right solution. It just depends on really what we would like to see as a council and as a governing body as a form of how we want to accept that public comment during this time. Anybody want to start?
I wouldn't mind going back to the modified participation and the social distancing and being masked like we were before and keeping the 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 audience to no more than 16.
Thank you, Councilmember Burrell. I see Councilmember Purnell has his hand raised. Go ahead, sir.
I agree with Dean.
Councilmember Oris?
I think that we should go back to in-person or modified. I do have a question or two. If we decide to go that way, the tax rate notice does say that the March 22nd meeting would be held via Zoom. Do we have to repost that?
My recommendation would be to make us come back, make this active, whatever the decision that the mayor and council decides to make that active starting in in April, just for the planning purposes, you figure we have a a public comment session for parcels 410 and 57, and then you do have your first public hearing on the tax rate, which I believe will be on the 22nd meeting. So my recommendation would be whatever the decision we make for the mayor and council to make that active April 1st. My recommendation for the boards and commissions is to bring them back immediately.
So is that a yes on the notice or no?
Well, my recommendation, like I said, is April 1st, so it would not change the 22nd meeting.
Okay, but we have staff full-time. Jeff, correct me if I'm wrong, staff is back full-time?
Staff is back in the buildings and buildings are open to limited public entry.
That started today.
Right, okay, so the staff is back for about a week publicly.
Then the staff came back March 1st, and that's been seven days. And then now town hall opened up today to to the public masked and socially distanced.
Right, so following all the precautions and then you you're stating that boards and commissions, you'd like to come back immediately. I think that if we have staff, public and boards and commissions in person, I think that the elected official, elected body should probably come back in person as well.
And you're saying immediately?
Yes.
No, I'm asking.
Uh, yes.
Now, the the one thing that I see, like I said, as a hurdle that we're gonna have to think through logistically, which is why I'm saying April 1st, is we have a public listening session scheduled for Heron Park, and I think that the volume of participation will exceed the 16 participants relatively quickly. And I think logistically, it's better to keep that Zoom, and I think that the 22nd, I think is better via Zoom, but I'm open to to hearing what everybody else thinks.
Mr. Mayor, why can't you Zoom the room in its entirety?
That's that's a really good question. We looked into using the monitors that are in front of the council members. The the issue is gonna become, we could Zoom, but you couldn't have everybody up on Zoom and then be able to talk. So let's just say, for exam- example, I have my MacBook in front of me and I'm leading the Zoom meeting. The if we're gonna take comment from the council, you would want everybody to be able to hear that. And I think the best way to be able to hear that would probably be to have Zoom right in front of you. But that's merely where the thought process was. If you see something that I'm missing, please, please let me know.
Well, I thought the point of the Zoom is if you Zoom the whole room, they could view it and post their questions, which you could read off.
There's there's a big, if I may, there's a big difference between zooming an individual computer, an individual person, and zooming an entire room. When you Zoom a room, there is special equipment that comes in and actually makes that room what they call a Zoom conference room. With with a lack of individual cameras on each participant, what you would end up is seeing basically what we were posting to Facebook earlier before we reached the Zoom format. So everybody would be at a distance. No one would be able to be heard very well. And the audience really would not be able to interact because we would not have a way of using those Zoom functions in a way that makes sense for an entire room. It it is something that that we've looked at, we've explored, tried to figure out various ways to do it, but without additional equipment, it it's just not, it just would not work very well.
Councilmember Nichols?
So I think we Zoom in school every day, all day, with 17 children in a classroom and a teacher leading the Zoom and children at home virtually Zooming in the same classroom. So I mean, keeping it basic, really and truly, all of us in the same room, literally with earbuds in your ear while we're all in that room Zooming. I mean, if it's that, if we need to be back there right now, if that's what you're proposing, we all be back in the room, or if that's what the group decides consensus-wise, that we all be back in the chambers together and Zoom. I mean, that's the, that's how we do it in public school every day with with everybody being able to be present, the person, the person who's in charge is still able to to moderate the Zoom, but everyone's still able to be seen as we are right now. So I mean, that's a, that's a thought.
If I may, if I may, is each individual child in the classroom also on Zoom?
Oh, yes. Each individual child in the classroom is on Zoom on their own iPad in the classroom, yes.
But they each have an iPad.
They each have a device. Each child does, yes, and they.
Each council member and each presenter then would need to bring a device in order to facilitate that.
Right, and that's, I mean, I don't, I'm not, I'm not disputing that, but that's what we're doing right now. So I'm not, I mean, I don't know what we're on. Some of us may be on PC, some of us may be on iPads or what have you, but I don't know, I'm not saying that everybody has. I don't even wanna assume that everybody does, but that's how it's done. That's how we do it in public school. I'm just throwing that out there.
No, and and that would really be the only practical way to do it, would for each individual council member and each presenter to have their own device, whatever that may be, just like it is now.
Right.
I'm sure some of them right now are on computers as I am versus a tablet or a cellphone. But if you wanted to do Zoom with everyone present in the room, each of you would have to bring your own device in order to get the most out of the function.
But as far as I'm concerned, I'm sorry, I didn't mean to cut you off on that one, but when we're talking about what we prefer, I'm fine with waiting until April, honestly, April for the first April meeting, just because I know we've got a lot going on between now and the first April meeting in order to try to allow everyone the opportunity to speak the way that they want it to in this session on the 15th, and then with the speak, you know, the budget, what have you on the second, on 22nd. So that's my thought.
And then I believe Kelsey has her hand up.
Just wanted to add to what Mary said. The monitors on the DAS are view-only. They are connected to the computer that I would be using. So I'm the only one that can alter anything that's on those screens. We could not connect webcams to them. So as Shanika and Mary were saying, yeah, the only way to do it would be to bring an individual device because those are view-only monitors that cannot be used for anything else as they stand right now.
Councilmember Oris?
So the deadline for the next week's planned session for Heron Park has passed. How many people have asked to present?
There have been a total of four who have asked to present and who are on the agenda. Actually, only two of them have actually submitted presentation materials, two just wish to speak.
Okay, so if the group decides to go back in person, can we, what I'll offer up that we get back in person on the 22nd? The next mayor council meeting.
So I'm hearing from Councilmember Oris that he's saying the 22nd. I'm hearing from Councilmember Nichols on the on the first meeting in April. Can I hear from the other council members what the what the preference is? And if we go back in person, what I'm thinking logistically is probably better to just shift back to the Facebook platform. It's similar to what we had in the past. It it offers that same medium, and then what we'll do is for public comment times, we we may just take like a 10-minute break to allow everybody to have a chance to be able to type their their question or comment in, and then we'll come back. So I'd like to hear from councilmembers Burrell, Nurr, and Purnell on a on a potential comeback in-person time.
April 1st is fine with me.
The first meeting in April?
Yes.
Thank you.
For me, the sooner the better. I think we should be doing in-person, but I understand the logistics of Heron Park, so the 26 works for me.
The 22nd of March?
22nd, I'm sorry, yes.
Okay, Councilmember Purnell?
22nd is fine.
Okay, so we will begin with our our first in-person modified attendance via Facebook streaming on the 22nd. That's also a public hearing on the tax rate. And then we will not be using Zoom for that platform, just so that everybody watching at home understands where the discussion has gone. We will be using Facebook for that that medium just so that everybody's aware now.
Mayor?
Yes.
For for Dave Gaskell, question is, we've already advertised this as a Zoom public hearing. And if we, obviously, if we re-advertise, I understand that, but are we are we treading on any thin ice on this?
I don't think so. You should just, you have another advertisement to hit the papers, right?
I believe so.
Just change the ad.
And we'll make sure that the meeting agenda is clearly stated that that's gonna be an in-person reduced density and via Facebook. Now, can I ask the group if there's any objection based off of the discussion that we've just had with bringing our boards and commissions back in that same modified stance starting this week?
And before anyone replies to that, I'd like to just add, if at all possible, we have an HDC meeting scheduled for Wednesday. We have backlogged them quite a bit because with the HDC, if you've ever participated or sat in on one, a lot of times the homeowner or the owner of the property brings building material, it has to be seen. So we we have a a meeting scheduled for Wednesday of this week, and there are quite a few folks on the agenda. So I need I need your support to move forward to have this thing happen on the 8th, on the 10th, excuse me, live with the modified restrictions. And what I will do is play door police, if you will. When a presenter does his or her thing, when they're done, I'll ask him to leave because it it'll be action before they leave, and then I'll allow them to leave the building and then right one out, one in.
And I I would say that if we're gonna come into an in-person setting, I I would like to see anybody that comes in be able to stay as long as they would like. If they want to stay for the beginning of the meeting all the way through, we'll allow that. Once we've hit our density, we're gonna have to, we'll cut it off there. If somebody chooses to leave midway through, then we can, we can ask them to come back in. But I'm afraid that if somebody wants to follow along in person and they've come to the meeting, then they're gonna miss whatever is is taking place from the time that they're asked to leave until they get back to being able to view it on whatever medium. So I would say that we don't usher people out unless they choose to leave on their own accord.
I think the sooner the better.
All right, so hearing, I'm I'm gonna just ask if there's any objection to anyone. And then if I don't hear any, then we're gonna move on to agenda item number three, which is motion 2021-06, requesting the approval of the Worcester County Recreational Tennis Program, and I believe Mr. Myra Smalls is gonna be, Small is gonna be leading this discussion.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor, for having me. Thank you. Also, on behalf of the Worcester County Rec Department, we would like to offer a tennis stroke clinic at Steve Nikata Park beginning May 11th and May 18th from 6:00 PM to 7:00 PM. Ages 14 and over and offering a $3 drop in price to the patrons of Worcester County.
Thank you, Mr. Small. We've had this program also in the past, and it's been fairly successful. If we have any questions by the council for Mr. Small.
Can you talk a little bit about the program? Is it just tennis lessons? What do you, what do you do?
Right, this is a an instructional tennis clinic here, where we have Mr. Russ Truitt, who's a professional tennis instructor, come out and teach technique and performance on tennis court for anyone interested.
Do we have any other questions from the council? If not.
I just wanted to question real quick. I was looking over the information. Is there a limit on the number of participants?
Uh, no, we don't have a limit. In in general, we average about 15 participants for the past year that we offered it.
Is it, is it going to be, are there gonna be two separate clinics, or is it the participants show on both dates?
It would actually be two separate clinics, but we.
So roughly 30 people.
They enroll in, yes, participants can even, either enroll on May 11th, May or May 18th.
Got it. Thank you.
And if I may, the Parks Commission actually met last week and reviewed the request, and as always, unanimously approved, making the recommendation to the mayor and council for approval.
That we are asking for action by the council on this.
I'll make a motion. We approve your request.
So I have a motion by Councilmember Nurr, looking for a second.
I'll second.
I have a second by Councilmember Nichols. Councilmember Oris, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Purnell, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Burrell, how do you vote?
Aye.
Thank you. So motion 2021-06, the approval of the Worcester County Recreation Tennis Program passes unanimously. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Small.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, council.
Thank you.
All right, so up next, we have a presentation by Atlantic General Hospital, and it'll be led by President Michael Franklin. President Franklin, thank you for joining us.
Certainly. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you, council members, for having us again this year so that we can have our annual presentation to let you all up on what we're doing at Atlantic General Hospital, what we're planning to do in the future. And we're doing it a little bit differently this year because of COVID over the last year. We thought it was important to let you all know what the experience was at Atlantic General Hospital directly from people who provided that care and also from the Board of Trustees who was representing the community and and guiding us through the last year as we were dealing with with the pandemic. So I have, before I have any comments, I wanted to allow Nettie Widgeon, who was who was a charge nurse and has been for several years in our emergency department, and who was on the front lines dealing with the COVID pandemic and patients coming in. And then also I have Mr. Greg Shockley, who is here with us, who's our board chair, and he was obviously working alongside us and making sure that we had the resources available and representing the community to make sure we were doing the right things. So so before I give any comments, I'd like you to hear from Nettie and and hear about the experience inside the hospital.
Hi, everyone. I'm Nettie Widgeon. Can you guys hear me okay?
We can. Thank you for joining us.
Great, thank you for having me. I'm very happy to be here. One of the main reasons that I'm happy to be here is because I live in the town of Berlin and Atlantic General is my hospital. I've just had my 17-year anniversary there. So I've been working there a long time, and needless to say, this was a very different year than the rest of them. I'll just preface this with, I love being an emergency room nurse and I love working at Atlantic General. One of the most important things about working in this community is that I truly believe that small rural areas deserve great healthcare, even just as you would receive downtown Baltimore, downtown DC. I believe that we deserve excellent emergency care right here in Berlin. And this has been a trying year for that. We've never been through a pandemic. And when COVID first started, we were confused and scared and worried, and we had meetings and we rearranged our emergency room a million times trying to figure out, you know, how do we keep people safe? How do we keep our patients separate? What are we gonna do with family members? What are we doing with kids, with multiple parents? And as we went through that, we were rearranging, and normally we don't need a bunch of negative pressure rooms. It's just not something you typically need in an emergency room, and we needed a lot of them all of a sudden. So with the support and the resources that we had, we we built more negative pressure rooms and we put doors on rooms that normally would have a curtain. We separated waiting areas so we could keep our patients separate out there. And we built an entire room out in our waiting area with a door that's completely enclosed and also has negative pressure. We were able to put people out front to screen visitors and patients coming in and keeping people separate. We were able to. We were able to rearrange our staffing in the back to try to have nurses with non-COVID patients, separate from nurses with COVID patients. And through all of this, never one time was I worried or in need of PPE, which is one of the most wonderful things about AGH. I would watch the news and I would see hospitals in the city, all over the country, saying nurses don't have masks, nurses don't have gowns. And I never went through that at AGH and I was so thankful because I was scared at first about, you know, coming home to my family. Could I keep my family safe? Could I keep my patient safe? But I always had gloves. I always had masks. I always had an N95. I always had goggles. I always had gowns. And that was another really amazing thing that we were able to do to keep each other and our patient safe. During the pandemic, I'm so happy that I didn't want for any of those things. And one of the kind of craziest experiences I had was I had a patient come into the emergency room and she had fallen down and broken her arm. And I brought her into the triage room and I was going through the triage with her and she was trembling. And I said, you seem like you're in a lot of pain. What's your pain level, zero to ten? And she said, three. And I thought, gosh, that's really not that high. I said, is everything else okay? You're trembling. You seem like you're in a lot of pain. And she just looked at me and said, I'm so scared. I'm so scared I'm going to get COVID here. She was scared of getting COVID from us in our emergency room. And the best moment was, was when I was able to tell her, we're going to keep you safe. We're going to keep you separate. And I knew I could keep her safe. And the way that we were able to keep her safe specifically and all of our other patients was through these resources, through what we were able to do, through the reorganizing, the building of negative pressure rooms, the separate waiting room space. So I just want to thank the town of Berlin and everybody for your support and for just really helping us out as, at the hospital through such a difficult year. It's, it's meant everything to us, so I really appreciate it.
Thank you, Nettie. I mean, I've had the firsthand opportunity to be able to work with you in your profession. And I will say that you couldn't ask for a more caring or compassionate nurse. If I was ever sick, I definitely want you taking care of me. But most definitely, it's, it's amazing to hear your first year, firsthand experience battling this COVID pandemic here locally in our community. And I'm glad that, I think I speak for the council and everybody in the town of Berlin. I'm glad that you had the resources you need to be able to stay safe, you and everybody else at the hospital. Thank you.
We did. Thank you so much. Thank you.
Greg Shockley.
Good evening, Greg Shockley. Can you guys hear me okay?
We can.
Thank you. All right, great. You know, Berlin is AGH's hometown, although we have a bigger service area. We, we pretty much reside in your area and we have a lot of Netties that are actually residents of Berlin that work at AGH. So, you know, they were taking care of their, their neighbors this year, which was probably a little more strenuous or stressful and, and difficult than it has been in past years with COVID. But, uh, I mean, they were taking care of their own and they did a tremendous job. One of the things that the board recognized over the course of the year were the local residents and the local businesses stepping up and providing whatever services they could, whether it was food or, or flowers or snacks and things to the staff that was working. And that was greatly appreciated by those guys that were working and dealing with COVID. And finally, I'd like to thank you guys for your support and partnership over the years. It's been very important to us. If you have any questions, feel free to reach out to us, either the board or the, the management. And you guys are fortunate that you have a, a board member and a finance committee member that resides in your council with Councilman Nair, so I'm sure he's a great source for you as well. So thank you, guys. Appreciate what you do for us.
Thank you.
Thank you, Greg.
So I'll, I'll provide just a little bit of data. This is going to be a brief, what I've done in the past. And you all have a copy of this information, so review it. Mary, if you would advance. What I'd like to share in the beginning of this is that we're in the process of redoing our strategic plan for beyond 2020. And over the last year, the Board of Trustees, working with, with committee members, have redefined and rewritten our vision, mission, value statement and, and really created some commitments to our community through our quality statement, our safety statement, our patient experience and our ethical commitment. So we've, we've essentially renewed our vows, in a way, to the community and, and what it is that, that we're going to be doing for the community over the next several years. Mary, I'll just, I'll just say, Mary, that'll be my button that I'm pushing.
That's fine.
Right, and go ahead again, Mary. Next slide. So where we're planning on going beyond this, and this is still in rough draft form, is continuing to work with the same five principles that we've worked with over the last several years. Having the, these five rights, the right care, the right people, the right place, the right partners, the right hospital. But the environment that we're going to be trying to create, we were focused on making sure that we had the right physicians and providers and provide primary care and specialty care through the community. We've also been working on creating a, a care coordination team throughout our community and in conjunction with making sure we're doing a good job with transitions of care between the hospital and, and back home with our patients. But health equity is another piece of the environment that we need to make sure is created throughout our region, particularly as it's to access to healthcare services. So that's going to require us to not only bring all the different components of care and, and partners in care together and coordinate those throughout our community, but it's also going to cause to focus on implementing technology like telemedicine and making sure that there's access to that technology throughout the region, particularly in our rural areas, because it is more difficult for people in rural areas to access healthcare services. We're also going to be putting forth greater efforts in our health literacy and health promotion throughout our, throughout our region. Because again, that ties together with health equity and make sure that people have access and they have the knowledge to make sure they're taking care of themselves. They have chronic illnesses or special needs. Know the right way to take care of themselves, to prevent them from becoming ill and, and having to overutilize the healthcare system. And by doing all this, we're changing our focus to, to making sure that we're a connected community, as well as a caring community. And how do we bring, bring together a connected, caring community around health, as well as healthcare in our region? So you'll be hearing more details of that from us over the next year. It's just a quick preview. Next slide will show our statistics over the last year. You could see that, that we had a, again, it was a challenging financial year because of COVID. But we had operational and we had total margin improvements over the year before. A lot of that had to do with, with transitions we were making with our electronic health records and efficiencies that were lost during that reinstallation and, and bringing live those new systems the year before. And then COVID last year, a little more challenging for us. And if you look down in the statistics in the boxes at the bottom, you can see that it was very odd to have a year where our admissions dropped by, by about five hundred admissions year over year. But at the same time, we had more days of care, which means we had patients, more patients in the hospital than usual, but we had less people admitted. And that was because people were having to stay long because they were so sick with COVID. And it was, it was challenging our resources throughout the organization. But you can see it impacted throughout, throughout our operations. They, you can see the challenges from a volume perspective, because people were staying away from, from the hospital because of what Nettie shared. People were afraid to come to the hospital because of COVID. And one of the things, and, and I'll, I'll argue a little with Nettie here, where she thinks that, that it's important for us to be just as good as Baltimore and DC hospitals, so I think it's important for us to be much better than those organizations. Because we, we can take care of our community better. And we're, and as Greg said, we're, we're taking care of our family members in, in our community. So over the next year, what you're going to be hearing from us is the importance of people coming back to see their physicians. Because yes, we're, we're getting through the other side of this. And with, with, with the vaccinations being distributed now, you'll, you'll be hearing about us really causing people to come back because, because COVID was out there, it doesn't mean diabetes stopped. Because COVID was out there, it doesn't mean congestive heart failure stopped. We still have, we still have a high-risk community for cancer because of the age of our population. So there are lots of reasons we need to have people get back to their usual relationship with their physicians in the community. Next slide, Mary. And over the last year in 2020, of our services, there were over fifteen million dollars in healthcare services that, that we provided at no cost to the community. A big part of this is our, is our flu vaccination clinics and now obviously our, our COVID vaccination clinics. We're, we're fortunate that over, over twenty percent of our community has been vaccinated. Worcester County, looking at the county statistics, it tends to be first or second in the, throughout the state as a proportion of the population that's been vaccinated either first or second. So we're, we're staying on top of it and we typically have, close to a hundred percent of our vaccination has been put into people's arms and is not sitting on the shelf. So if you watch those statistics, part of that is the community impact of us working alongside our health department and our community members in making sure that people are safe. But there are lots of financial assistance and charity care that we provide and, and we continue to provide those services at Atlantic General. Next slide, please. And part of the community impact, obviously, is we have over nine hundred and thirty employees at Atlantic General Hospital. We have a payroll of almost, almost sixty million dollars. And we have over two hundred and fifty physicians that, that practice in one way or another through Atlantic General. Next slide, Mary. And a big part of this is adding new physicians to our community and making sure, as I shared in that, in our vision, that it's important for us to have an environment where we have the right number of primary and specialty care physicians. And we've added over the last year or so, members of those different specialties. We've added to urology and general surgery and gastroenterology. We were able to bring and expand psychiatric services in our community and also primary care down in the Pokimoke region. Next slide, please. And to, and to really add multiples to that workforce, one of the challenges all hospitals throughout the country are facing are, are the availability of physicians because of the fact that so many physicians are retiring and we had less people entering medical school for a period of time. So that caused us to adopt a strategy to bring in more advanced practice providers, which are nurse practitioners or, or physicians assistants who can practice independently and also carry a patient load and, and give us more access to, or give people who live in our community more access to primary care in particular, but some specialty care in our community through these advanced practice providers. So you can see here, we've expanded by, we expanded by about ten over the past year to make sure that we have access in, in regions from, from up in Ocean View, Delaware, down to, down to Pokimoke, over to Ocean City and, and throughout Berlin. Next slide, please. Again, we continued our flu clinics. I talked about this. Next slide, please. We talked about, I talked a little bit about our, our COVID patients. You can see the percentage of our population is over twenty-one percent now. That is received the first dose and you can see that we're first in Maryland with total population and that has received the second dose. Next slide, please. One of the key issues that we're working to address is making sure that we are getting the, the vaccine in the arms of, of people who are, who may be most at risk in our community. And, and that's really directly focusing on the communities of color throughout our region. And if you look at the, this is the, these are the Maryland statistics. And our statistics were actually proportionately worse than the Maryland statistics in making sure that communities of, communities of color were participating in the vaccine clinic or had access to vaccine between either us or the health department's administration clinics. So we've begun to work with our faith-based communities that, in partnership with those throughout the region and, and bringing the, the, the church leaders and the faith-based community leaders together to help people navigate the, the technology that's necessary to, to get a, to get a, an appointment to, to go to one of these vaccination clinics, because the only way they're available through the state system is through online technology. So in creating this partnership with the, with the faith-based communities, we were able to have some, some focused clinics. We had one a couple of weeks ago. We'll be having another one this upcoming week to deal with communities of color who have really been challenged, particularly in rural areas, in having access to these vaccine clinics. And that's going to do a great job of advancing our community further and making sure that we're balancing. And we're seeing this, this first dose race chart being a representation that's, that's similar to the racial distribution throughout our community of people who live here. Next, excuse me, next slide, please. I've, I've listed out here a number of the direct things that Nettie, Nettie touched upon, the things that we had to do in the hospital and respond very quickly to receiving COVID, starting about a year ago. The, the pandemic beginning and the state of emergency being announced. Next slide, please. So these different issues are there for you to, for you to see and look over. And also, if you've, if we look at what we've done, particularly from the standpoint of, of where we are in this first year, we hit about the, we're right at the first year anniversary of us having our first COVID-positive patient in the, in the hospital. But as of Wednesday, March third, we've had, we cared for three hundred and eighteen patients during that period of time who had to come into the hospital for COVID nineteen. And there were quite a few of those who ended up in the ICU. And we had, we've had a significant number of people who were, had to go into ICU and, and be on ventilators who actually have recovered and been able to be discharged from the hospital and are recovering outside of the hospital. And what's, one of the things that we're very proud of, and again, as, as Nettie shared, we have had no staff infected with COVID, COVID virus, working with patients in the hospital. We were fortunate enough to get out front and be on top of the, the PPE and, and making sure that, that people had their appropriate protective equipment from the beginning. We isolated things well from the beginning. And what's, on the other side of that is our staff were very committed to making sure they were taking care of themselves too. Because while people in other organizations had the PPE available, if they were, if they were kind of, if they were loose about how they, how they used that PPE or they, they didn't commit to making sure they were changing it properly and doing the right thing for themselves, that's when people got into trouble. And then they shared, they would share that more in the community. They would take that virus home to their family and they would also mingle with other coworkers and create more of a problem. So it was the dedication of our staff and our infection control team and all who really made, made our environment safe and really helped us to be as successful as we were over the last year. Next slide, please. And then to touch on briefly what's going on at Ocean Pines, COVID set us back. We, we were working through this and, and we put everything on hold while we were going through COVID and, and focused our attention on, on what was happening there. And now we're, we're getting our heads back up and able to look at the horizon again and not look at the ground that we're currently working on and, and making plans for what it's going to be to, to expand services at Ocean Pines, looking at a new medical office building, as well as having ambulatory surgery services available and, and expanding access to specialty care and other forms of care. Next slide, please. It's just a close-up look we do. Again, as, as we, as Greg shared, it's partners like the town of Berlin. The Godelski family has been, has been committed to, to Atlantic General Hospital since the beginning and has been, have provided resources to us and are working with us closely on, on helping us to, through, through our campaign for the future, help to provide financing for the, for the center in Ocean Pines. Next slide, please. So that's, that's my quick review for this year and update. And I'd be happy as, as all past years to take any, any questions that you might have regarding what we've been doing or what we're planning to do.
Thank you. Do we have any questions from the council or comments?
I have a comment. I'd, I'd like to say thank you to Mr. Franklin and the staff at Atlantic General for taking the initiative to step out outside the box and working with the faith-based community to get the elderly or those without internet capability registered. It has meant a great deal to a lot of people. Me personally, I mean, before having my mother's pastor involved in the churches locally, we weren't able to get her set up. But thanks to your help or the the co working, she and her siblings, who are all senior citizens, were all able to get their first dose. And today we got them all registered for their second, so it means a lot to a lot of people in the community and my family first hand. Thank you.
Great.
Any other comments or questions from the council? All right.
Michael, I just want to.
Thank you for everything you all do.
Michael, I'll just ask a quick question. You mentioned the fifteen million that the hospital spends in the community and a lot of that was the COVID shots, flu shots. What are some of the other programs? Could you talk about just a few of them that we do?
Yeah, any any of that is again, as as I said, it's uncompensated care. So we we do have quite a few people who live here and visit here who may not have health insurance or who are unable to cover the cost of their their. Copay or they're deductible and they're high deductible. And so we have to oftentimes go through through a financial assistance program that we have in place that we're obligated to have in place. But it's that's that's part of that care that's delivered in the community. It's also the the health fairs and the health educational programs, for instance, working with the the county school system and the health literacy program. And and providing resources to the kids in the public school system and grades, grades one through eight. And making sure that that our youth are learning good health behaviors early in life. So our our assumption is they will carry that forward if we can help them at an earlier stage in life to adopt healthier behavior. So it's all those types of things that we're doing in the community that's a part of that fifteen million dollars.
Thank you. Thank you. All right. Hearing no further comments or questions, President Franklin, thank you. Ms. Wooden, thank you and Mr. Shockley, thank you all for your presentation and your insight. It's it's been very helpful and and we wish everyone continuing a safe. A safe pathway through this pandemic. So thank you all.
Thank you, Mayor and Council.
Thank you for having us.
Thank you very much.
All right. So we're going to move on to agenda item number five, which is the introduction and the first reading of the tax rate ordinance. I'll begin by stating that I have recommended keeping our tax rate the same for FY twenty two as FY twenty one. With a rate of not changing it to eighty cents per one hundred dollars of assessed value. In a few minutes, the town administrator is going to read the tax rate ordinance. But before he does, I do want to provide the council with a little bit of a summary of where our projected revenues and expenditures are. And the current position that we see with the the preliminary numbers coming in. But I will add that these are very early stage numbers. We don't have any of our firm revenue items. For us, but we're we're working towards all of that. So just so that you're aware and the public's aware, we're projecting revenues of around six point four million dollars. And our projected expenditures are around six and a half million dollars. At this present moment, with those rough numbers coming in, we do have about a hundred and thirty thousand dollar deficit between those two numbers. The revenues versus the expenditures. Despite the roughly a hundred and thirty thousand dollar shortfall, I'm very confident that we can close that gap without having to increase the tax rate. Without anyone being in jeopardy of losing their job and without cutting any of our critical services that we provide to the community. With that being said, I know the pandemics, we just heard from the hospital, I know the pandemic's been very hard on everyone. And the last thing that I would like us to do as a as a council or a governing body is increase that tax rate and provide even more. Stress on some families and and our residents that live in the community. So I, like I said, I am recommending the eighty cent tax rate, keeping it constant for a hundred dollars of assessed value. Now I'll turn it over to the town administrator to go ahead and read that tax rate ordinance and then we'll follow up with the finance director to. Answer any questions that we may have from the council.
Thank you, Mayor. Ordinance twenty twenty one dash zero one, an ordinance of the mayor and council of the town of Berlin, Maryland. And Maryland Municipal Corporation setting the real property tax rate for fiscal year twenty twenty two. Whereas the town charter section C three dash ten requires that the mayor and council pass an ordinance setting the real property tax rate necessary. To sustain the town's budget and whereas the mayor and council have determined what the real property tax rate shall be. Now therefore be it resolved by the mayor and council of the town of Berlin, Maryland, at the tax rate for fiscal year twenty twenty one, twenty twenty two. Shall be eighty cents per one hundred dollars of assessed value of real property located within the town limits of Berlin, Maryland. This ordinance was introduced at the re was introduced and read at a meeting of the town council held on the eighth day of March twenty twenty one. And therefore, a statement of the substance of the ordinance was published as required by law.
Thank you, Town Administrator Fleetwood. We'll also turn it over to the Finance Director Natalie Slay. And if we've missed anything, David Gaskell, please let us know.
You have not.
Thank you. Finance Director Natalie Slay.
Basically, I don't have any sub comments for that. It's announced and it's the first reading of the ordinance, its introduction of the tax rate.
Thank you. Any questions from the council? Regarding any of the revenue expenditure projections or or the tax rate. Go ahead, Councilmember Purnell. Councilmember.
Yeah, I I don't know how this is. Yeah, can you hear me yet?
Yes, we can hear you.
I don't know how this is possible. Is there any way you can share with us? Any type of the budget that you guys had discussed? Because we two years ago had nothing in there for any capital improvements. We used the highway revenues for our roads we did last year and did very well with the money that we got. But after hearing from PKS this year, how did you come up with eighty cents?
How did we come up with eighty cents or how?
Yeah, how how did that be? I I know there's an awful lot of improvements that still need to be made. And we didn't have anything in the budget and we cut the budget by ten percent in the last two years. Is there any way you can share the figures you've used to come up with this? Because you just said we're a hundred and thirty thousand dollars upside down.
Yes, so to answer some of the questions that you have. We do have some capital items that are in this budget that have been requested by staff, which are in part what's getting us to that deficit that we're in. But there's also a little bit of room for for some some wiggling to be able to keep us in the confines of that tax rate. To be able to still make some of the investments that we need to make in some of the capital, we're not going to be able to make up the years past ground all in one fiscal year. But there is a way that we are able to make some of those capital improvements that we need to make while still keeping within the the tax rate.
Can you please share those numbers with I I've not seen them. I don't know if any other council members have yet, but I'd love to see the facts. That you use to come up with those numbers. If there's any way you can share those with us, I really appreciate it.
Right, so we have the real property tax calculations that we've received from Worcester County. That we could definitely share with the council. All the early department head requests are very, very much in their infancy. And we've worked through some of that and we have several meetings with department heads scheduled for this week. So I think that before we end up at the the council adopting the tax rate. There will be some documentation that you'll be able to base your your opinion on.
I'd love to see what you base your opinion on. That's that's what I'm looking for because you've obviously used some numbers so far to come up with this this number. So whatever you've got right now, I'd love to see.
Right, so we have a draft of the the budget already created, which we could share with the council. But it is you're going to have to know that that is very much in its infancy. So I have no problem passing that along to the council, but it is in a draft format, so we could definitely share that with you. Councilmember Burrell.
I look forward to working through this this shortfall. Of a hundred and forty some thousand dollars.
No, it's less than a hundred and thirty, but it's very near.
I really do look forward to working through that and like Troy, if you have preliminary numbers or or a draft budget. Something that that we could digest now, I would greatly appreciate putting my hands on.
Yes, sir. We'll make sure you get it.
Thanks, Zach.
Councilmember, you're welcome, sir. Councilmember Horace. We can't hear you, sir.
That's because I hit the raise hand button. So it was kind of addressed a little bit here. Where does the council see kind of the the draft? And it's it's kind of early on, which which I've asked this a little bit before and I'm going to ask it again. Is what is the virtue of having the tax rate set so early in the budget season?
I'm going to defer to the Finance Director on that one.
In the past, we've come to a decision to review the tax rate a little bit earlier than the workshop. As a guidelines or as a driving mechanism to see what the real estate tax revenues will bring to the general fund. Mostly because general fund itself based in the operations on seventy percent dependent on the real estate tax revenue. It is not a service no fee based fund. So in the past, it would, we made a decision and actually a resolution was created to review real estate tax before we go into. To see what we can plan for general fund in general. To have that revenue projection in place and knowing the rate before we go into the capital projects. Or structuring the draft for next fiscal year is really helpful for us to see what we can do and what we can plan. And what we can afford and see, basically, I would like to see a three year plan with the tax rate incremental increase would be great. That's the reason we discuss in this early in the stage.
So what I'm hearing is then is we haven't, obviously, we have an idea of the of the tax revenue. But we have a policy and that's the way it's always been done.
It's not always been done. It's been reviewed and the decision was made, I believe, four or three years ago. And that's that's definitely helping because knowing the revenue projections for the general fund is actually allowing us to know what capital projects we can structure.
Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Mer.
Yeah, Zach, you you set the rate at eighty cent per hundred, but shouldn't when you set the rate, shouldn't it come with a balanced budget? I mean, you're already telling us there's a shortfall. You set the rate and there's a shortfall.
We we have to present a balanced budget to the council by the town charter. But with this being said, the the rate that needs to be set is proposed at eighty cents. The 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 rate is not tied to the binding part of the balance budget, but it does have to present. I do have to present a balanced budget to the council, but that does not have to be done the way that I understand it at the time of the tax rate being set.
So you've had the privilege of seeing all these numbers. The council has not. So what what were you thinking about cutting to balance this budget?
So I have meetings with the department heads this week, so we're going to review that budget very thoroughly. But the thing is, is that, like Natalie said, we received the revenue projections early on when we were crafting this. This budget and the budget schedule, what we asked was the department heads to look at what they truly need. Go ahead and put that in the budget for now and we're going to take a look at those things. And then also we get those revenue projections a little bit later. So the the build out process started. Now we've got the revenue projections and now we got to go back through and say, okay. What's actually going to get us to that balanced budget? What are the things that we need currently? What can hold off another year? And so on and so forth, but we have not had that chance to to do that with each department. So I would be hesitant to start discussing a strategy for achieving a hundred and thirty thousand dollar deficit here right now.
And so answer this if you could, the the income, the six point four million dollar revenue stream. That was based on the eighty cents and not the constant yield, correct?
Well, that's based on many factors. So if you you take the town's tax tax base currently and assess that eighty cent. Eighty cents per one hundred dollars of assessed values, you're going to come in somewhere around the three point what six, three point seven million dollar range, Natalie?
If we stay in the same eighty cents, we will receive additional hundred thirty thousand in comparison with last year. So the real estate tax rate will come to three point seven. With that said, that is already in the projections. And just to add to Councilor's question, when the department heads project it and request it. They've been asked to ask or or plan only must have items. So the draft that we have basically is not something that we are toying with ideas. It's pretty much what needed. So to kind of clarify the situation, we have a gap. So my professional opinion is to go with the incremental increase to close the gap and not to cut the projects.
And something like the future or potential sale of, let's say, parcel fifty seven, that really doesn't factor into anything until it actually happens.
That is not factored and will not affect the balance of the budget if such sale will happen in the future. That will go against the outstanding debt that we have with the bank. That will not be part of the revenues that will be applied for usage of general fund.
Does that answer most of your question, Councilmember Mer?
Yes.
Thank you. Councilmember Burrell.
Natalie just said that that department has have been asked to submit. I'm going to say bare bones budget, just of what must have. And I want to know what role will department heads have into making the necessary cuts to compensate for this hundred and thirty thousand dollars?
They're going to be very integral in that. That's also why I'm not going to stand here and say we're going to cut something without having the opportunity to first speak with our department heads. It's essential that we we digest the fact that we have anticipated shortfall. We have to work through the budget. I I don't agree with the fact that it's that it's bare bones. I I really do think that we have. I wouldn't be presenting an eighty cent tax rate and keeping that constant if I did not know with some sense of confidence. That we we can achieve that goal while still making the investments that we need to make in FY twenty two. I I think that answers your question.
Mayor, I want to I want to just do a quick summarization, if you don't mind for a second. About a month ago is when Natalie and I and department heads began the budget process. Department heads have have submitted their request, if you will, for 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 their operation. Their requests have been vetted by both Natalie and I. We have, you know, with with the budget, you've got a general fund FY twenty two capital request. There's a number of things on this capital request. And then in turn, that's been evaluated. And what will happen is the mayor said Thursday and Friday of this week. Department heads will meet with Natalie, myself and the mayor to go over the each individual department budget. And to see if there's any other wiggle room with that. The but but again, I reiterate what has been said, what has been submitted from the department says their needs and not their wants. So that I think that's very important. There's not a lot of fluff with it. Natalie, just I I asked you the question today. The the overall general fund budget in this in this February twenty sixth draft. The the expenses for FY twenty two, how do they compare to FY twenty one again?
They're about in the same line and I believe it's a little bit of increase because with. With with a little increase for the healthcare, basically the personnel cost. So the difference if we're going with six point five, I believe, fiscal twenty one at six point seven, so it's about two hundred thousand difference.
And then the the other thing along the lines with Natalie just shared, right, wrong or indifferent. I think we all know it's a fairly significant expense for the town, but our fuel costs. I think we all know when you go to the gas pump, gas has gone up, you know, forty fifty cents a gallon. So we did across the board do a, you know, five percent inflation for FY twenty two. And to be honest with you, I hope that is a good target number because, I mean, it's already proved me. I hope that is a good target number because, I mean, it's already proved me wrong before we even get into the year with what gas prices have done. So but again, this is a, this is I firmly believe this is a bare bone request from the department heads.
Councilmember Nichols?
I know we're just intro or you're just introducing, or this is the first reading of the budget, the proposed budget. But Natalie, you stated a couple of times that you would you would like to see a gradual increase. Could you, is it, are you able to elaborate on that now, or should we wait?
No, there's there's nothing wrong with elaborating on that at all. And just to clarify, we are talking about the introduction of the tax rate.
Right, I'm sorry. I'm sorry, I'm I'm.
Just for everybody listening at home, I just wanted.
Right, tax rate. I'm sorry. Excuse me with that one.
Go ahead, Finance Director Slay.
Well, I believe that it would be more feasible to incrementally increase the tax rate than bypass several years and then going up couple of pennies at a time. So if we go in a little bit up each year, that would allow basically to have the budget balanced and to have projects in place and to plan for three to five years ahead of the time. I believe that in the past, when we haven't had any increases for so many years and then jump up so many pennies, that was painful to the citizens. And it was not a good planning in the past nor practice. So my opinion is to go with incremental rate. I'm not suggesting a huge jump, but a small rate. So that would help us to balance the budget and in the same time, plan for at least three years in the future with the capital improvements.
Mayor Natalie, I also just want to add, because we have three new council members, the the rate that's been introduced, that's not the locked in rate, if you will. You guys will go through the workshops. And if you at some point decide as a collective body that that rate needs to go down or that rate needs to go up, that's a decision that you'll have to make.
Now, with that being said, I will defer to our town attorney, David Gaskell. I believe the tax rate will need to be set by the council on the twenty second. Is that correct?
I I really, I don't know the answer to that off the top of my head. Mayor, I I would have to get you that tomorrow.
Okay.
And then March twenty second, we have the meeting set up for the adoption of a tax rate. The second advertisement will go in the newspaper before that. And I have changed the wording. We are zoomed to change to to town hall already and listed. So everybody will be aware. We will have to accept the tax rate or adopt the tax rate. Yes.
And then I will also add that there were some some other options that were discussed as far as the tax rate, and we'll make sure when we pass along the documentation of the very draft level preliminary budget that will also send over those yield rates for everybody to take a look at. And Councilmember Burrell, I believe you had your hand up.
I just wanted to know, when when are we going to get that draft?
You can probably have that this evening. I'm pretty sure Natalie could send that over to everybody as well as the tax rates. From we're working with currently a, I think the last update was February twenty sixth as far as the draft budget that we're working with currently. So we'll send that over to you.
Thanks.
You're welcome. Councilmember Horace?
I did the hand thing again. So just to kind of go back, Jeff had said, if in this year's schedule is is set, but if we're to change in the future and we change, the council changes the tax rate after it's presented, does it have to be legally announced again in another public hearing? If that were to ever happen?
Well, my understanding is, let's take, for example, that the eighty cents per one hundred dollars of assessed value is not what the council would like to move forward with. And say that the council would like to entertain something higher than that or lower than that. The body has the ability to make that recommendation on the twenty second, at which time it's brought to a vote before the mayor and council, well, before the council. And then that is the rate that we would use for the budget. Mine is merely a recommendation based off of my opinion, working with the budget. And then that's where that's where it stops. It's then on the council to make the determination of whether or not they agree with that projection.
That is correct. The council has the has the right and the privilege to amend, make amendments to this proposed ordinance.
Not right now, but.
Not right now, on the twenty second.
Correct.
This is just the first read.
Yes.
Right. Okay, thank you. I just, for FY twenty three, I I would entertain reviewing our budget process after this fiscal year. And and I, we can discuss that.
And it's it's been talked about this evening, but it's also been in our discussion that we want the council to be able to make an educated decision, and that's not merely based off of me giving you preliminary numbers on revenue and expenditures and telling you that we have a hundred and thirty thousand dollar shortfall. We wouldn't expect you to make that that decision on a tax rate with those numbers. So we we want you to have the budget. We want you to be able to take a look at where we're coming in at and and what the numbers are. But I I do want everyone to know that those numbers are in their infancy and and going to probably change even later this week. So take a look at it, and as we have working drafts, we'll happily pass that along, but.
May I just add, the the budget draft will be updated with several changes and I can certainly nail it to every email to everybody for you. And I would like to ask everybody to keep as a consideration for incremental budget increase for fiscal twenty two and also keep in mind that we are in the second year of reassessments. So next year, going into fiscal twenty three, it will be the third year. So the the actual base rate will change for real estate properties in the town. And also, as we go in forward, we're also discussing the stormwater fees, water fees and the sewer fees as well. So I think it's it's very important to think about incremental tax rate for fiscal twenty two.
And it's also important, like Natalie just said, when we're thinking about the enterprise funds, so water, sewer, electric and stormwater, those are not within this general fund draft. So if you're looking through that budget and you're like, where are these things located? You will see some things like overhead allocation or something like that. As a matter of fact, for your draft, it's going to be missing. But what you can do is apply, this is what we've done, you apply FY twenty one's revenue projections, just say that they're going to remain constant, and that should get you to where you need to be mathematically with the with the deficit that we're in.
Can can we get the can we get the proposed in Excel format?
Yeah, we'll make sure.
I'll make sure that I will get the copy in Excel. Just keep in mind, it's a little complicated when we export to the Excel, but yeah, sure.
And if if you discuss any items, say you send out an email, just a reminder to everyone, you might include all of us, but we cannot have dialogue on any of those particular things in an email setting. So just as an FYI.
And Natalie, when you send that out, send both PDF and Excel.
Yes, absolutely. And what was mentioned before about overhead allocations, I will input those numbers as fiscal twenty one, so it will not create confusion.
All right. Do we have any further questions or comments from the council regarding?
Thank you.
First reading.
Just thank you all.
All right. So let's move on to our next agenda item, which is agenda item number six. And that is our reserve policy for the town of Berlin and our finance director Natalie Slay will be running point on this discussion.
Natalie, Natalie? If you all don't mind for a second, I I just want to preface something before Natalie begins this, the for the for for the folks that have been on the council about a year ago and the mayor, if you think back about a year ago, we introduced a a draft reserve policy for you to consider, generated quite a bit of discussion. I will tell you, over the last eleven months or so, there's been a significant amount of work that's gone into this four page document. I am in the hopes that after Natalie does her explanation that you understand a little bit better, but I want everybody to please take the opportunity to try to understand. And and I think the big motivation behind this, and Natalie, again, will fill in the blanks. I know that over the course of the past few years, our external independent auditor, PKS has highly recommended, as well as the GFOA best practices, that the town establish a reserve policy. Again, what I will say regarding this policy, it is a guide. Okay, it is not edict, it's not law, it can be changed, but it's it's a it's a it's framework to get to what what we think makes good sense. And when you when you take a look at this, again, it's going to be a lot of categories, a lot of numbers, but the reality on something is some of those, as we get into this, as Natalie gets going, some of those categories, and I like to call them buckets of money, those have been established prior, they're in place, but we're trying to formalize all this to make it a working, readable, living document with a with a goal to obtain all the buckets with the monies that we've recommended. So Natalie, thank you.
Thank you, Jeff. So past meeting, we have discussed the general fund and what are the layers of the general fund in consist of and at the bottom of it as the balance of the general fund. As Jeff mentioned, we've been presenting this policy for your review in the past. This draft in front of you is basically a revision of what been presented in the past. A little bit easier wording, a little bit more structure. But again, it is a policy, it is an internal control, it is the guidelines with the goals and the points and the targets. You're not bound by it, you can change it, you can revise it in the future, but it's certainly a huge help for us to establish the levels of the general fund. And some will ask, well, why reserve policy? Why do we need it? In our management letter in the past from the external auditors, BTS and company, we had a sentence to actually advise in us to establish the policy. JPOY advises to establish the policy. And again, it could be very simple as one sentence. It could be targeted for us and tailored for us for our needs. So when you ask yourself, why do we need it? I think we needed to improve the resilience of the town. We needed to have it to mitigate the revenue shortfalls and ensure that we have continue the service in case of emergencies or unpredicted situations. So basically, your first page is the purpose of why do we need this policy? Very straightforward. One, two, three, four, and recover the uncertainties of revenues, the fluctuation of the expenses. And also, we are prepared to fight the disaster and the financially stable in in the bond ratings and banking system. So if we go to the second page, you have seen that table before, it is a description of each layer. The fund have several layers. We have restricted, committed, assigned and unassigned. Each layer basically has an explanation restricted straightforward. It is an external restrictions from bondholders or council, mayor council or other level of government. So in this specific layer, we would have funds that would be restricted by ordinance through legislation, through the formal ordinance. The committed level of the fund is a specific purpose assigned by resolution by the council. So it has a purpose, it is committed. Assigned has a lesser commitment, basically earmarked or set aside for a specific purpose, per purpose of the expenditure. And then unassigned is basically what not fallen in the categories above and what's left at the end within the general fund. So what we should take into consideration, calculating how much we have to have in each layer or just like Jeff calls them, how much we have in each bucket. So we have to think about what happens if the revenues change, there is a revenue shortfall, there is an emergency. There is there is a need for planning for the capital or capital improvement. Or we have to assume the debt and we don't have specific reserve that we need to serve the debt service. So basically, all this need to be taken into consideration by building those levels. I'm not going to read through every single classification. I would rather bring a little chart that I have in place and I will talk through to maybe visually. Mary, can we bring that chart that we have? Can I already say okay? All right. So the the levels of general fund or the layers, the reserve, the green colors here, what we already have, we have those in place, we have those established. The yellow is what we propose in or we hope in to create as a target goals. And I believe there is some shifted out there. It's a little but we can read it. So so in restricted, we have slots revenues and we have impact fees. And those amounts will vary because we don't have to have a target. They're restricted by outside purpose and it could the amount at the end of the year could vary, obviously, as the revenues come in. Then we have a proposed level, which is the committed. The proposed level to have a debt service, which will equal of one year principal of interest of that service for outstanding instruments for general fund only. The approximate amount will be needed if we look at the next year, for example, fiscal twenty two budget that service, three hundred ten thousand dollars. The proposed or target disaster recovery reserve level and two fifty, we would ask why? Because it's just a good face to start with. Two fifty is a good solid number to mitigate or start mitigating any disaster that would probably or hopefully not to strike the town in case of weather emergencies or human made emergencies. Then we go to assigned. We have assigned level already and we have healthcare and a community center in within. The proposed to target to have a stabilization reserve and a capital reserve. And the capital reserve is a fixed amount of a hundred thousand. So we would establish this level and rely on it in case of emergency improvement for the capital assets or plan for the future to set aside that monies in case we need to replace something for department within the general fund. The stabilization reserve as a proposed desired level is a twenty percent of a current fiscal year general fund operating budget, which will vary, but will be within if we stay within the same general fund operating budget, a million or a million point one. So that's overall structure of the fund. Then the use and replenishment, obviously, if we decided to use any of the monies or move from one assigned balance to committed, that would be also always discussed discussed by mayor and council and approved by. And we would report the balances during the budget. I would present the balances and recommend the levels. So on the last page, the only thing I want to point to your attention where it says reporting fund balance levels under the second paragraph, the only exclusion we make him, it's right in the middle, on occurrence of a condition for which the disaster response and recovery recovery reserve was created. The town administrator may transfer funds up to the balance of such reserve. So what basically it means if something catastrophic hits, the town administrator will have the choice to transfer out of the disaster recovery fund money to accommodate the very first response need. That's I just want to point out to the sentence. But other than that, every single time if the transfer or use or replenishment, it would go for mayor and council approval.
Thank you, Natalie.
Summary, if you have any questions.
Thank you, Natalie. Do we have any questions from the council?
Council member Horace?
Excuse me, of course, I just want to say that this is, you know, this was a lot of, obviously a lot of work in a year, year and a half. So thank you all for the reporting on the fund balance levels. The draft right now states during the annual budget adoption process and audit presentation. I do remember we did talk about quarterly reports to the mayor and council. Do you think that would be too much to just kind of touch on these every quarter?
On a quarterly basis, the balances probably will not change much because the restricted, committed and assigned balances, they're pretty much target. And once you achieve, they shouldn't change. The only balance will vary is the unassigned balance or restricted where the slots revenues and impacts fees coming. It's possible, we can report on that quarterly, but the amounts will not fluctuate.
I was just wondering, I mean, I was just kind of, we got to the, those two points, so that, thanks.
And just to elaborate on council member Horace's question, you'll notice that some of the figures have a percentage attached to them as a fun level recommendation. And that was merely done from the stance that the budget numbers tend to change over time. And rather than having to work with outdated numbers, this gives the council and the public a benchmark to be able to evaluate whether those funds are meeting the goals that we set out or not. So just so that everybody, when they're looking at it, understands. Council member Ner?
Yes, this is for Natalie or Jeff, correct me if I'm wrong. I think you indicated that this has been brought up to prior councils. If you could talk, talk a little bit about the history and why it didn't pass then, what was the objection back then?
That, that's a, that's a fair question. It was presented about a year ago. I think that, and I'm, I'm not throwing darts, if you will, but I think that the way it was presented, it was not received well. I think that it was, in fact, I don't think, I know it was, it was far more wordy than what you see today. And that's, that's why, if you think back, the last couple of meetings that we've had, we, we've kind of been trying to take baby steps to get to this. It's been discussed, not in great detail. But I think that what you, what you're looking at tonight is fairly straightforward. And again, just to remind everyone, you know, the, the categories, the restricted, committed and assigned, all that, the control, if you will, is, is done by you all. It's, it's, it's a, it's a function of the council. We, when I say we, staff has, you know, if we're going to make any changes to any of that, it takes, it takes council's approval. It's not a decision that we can make, you know, arbitrarily on our own. The, the, the thing that I think everybody needs to understand as well, Mary, can you put that chart back up? Again, the, the restricted, committed and assigned, that, that's controlled totally by the, by the mayor and council. The unassigned spendable category, there is no control. That's where the number comes in at the end of the year, that's going to fluctuate. If you think back FY19, that number was, I believe Natalie, correct me if I'm wrong, it was $16,000. And then as of June 30th of 20, of 20, that number was just a bit over a million dollars. So to answer your question again, council member Ner, I think it was the way that it was presented. I don't think it was explained as succinctly, if you will, as what Natalie has done. But I, and I find this, this three-page document fairly straightforward. If you take the opportunity and, and start at the top and go to the, you know, go to the ending.
Thank you, council member Burrell.
I see the work that has been put into this version of this document. And like Jeff said, it, it is, it is straightforward. It is straightforward and, and easy to understand. But I would like to see a number. I would like to see a number that would be the number for, for all categories. And that number divided as, as Natalie has indicated in her spreadsheet or in her diagram. I, I, I would also like to see a number associated even with those items that have percentages. And a provision in this document related to the evaluation and update of those percentages. I think this, this document needs to be a standing document. It needs to be a document that, that, that changes little. That would give us, that would give us a goal to work toward. But if this is going to be changing every year or every six months or whatever, with the exception of updating those percentages, I don't think it would be worth the paper it is written now. So, so this is good work. This is something that is needed. But, but I do believe that it could be made simpler and clear by asking, by providing those numbers that I am requesting.
Thank you, council member Burrell. I do have a couple of questions about your request. So you would like to see the number of, so let's use one of these as an example, if you don't mind. So let's take like the stabilization reserve where it's targeted, I think in the policy or the, the draft that you have in front of you, it's 20% of the current fiscal year general fund expenditures, operating expenditures. And where that moves in a given year, we, we did opt for the percentage. I mean, that's up to the council, how we would like to proceed. And, and the total of that, as it's projected currently, is 1.1 million dollars. So you want to see that total number divided by what?
I, I want to see, I, I want to see the number for all sources. That number.
Mayor?
Yes.
If, if I may, council member Burrell, when you, when you take a look at the, the, the document that's portrayed now on the screen, if you take a look at the committed total, the third, third from the left, the total is 560,000 for that.
Yep.
And then for the assigned, it's 1.9, okay? The, the restricted funds, that is going to vary.
And for the, like when we would present, say, at the way that the policy reads during the budget adoption and at the time of the audit, what we would see is something similar to this so that the council can see, all right, what's the benchmark that we would like to achieve? Are, where are we in respect to that? And what, what's kind of our goal to get there, you know what I mean? So the...
But, but, but those numbers may change.
Correct.
Year after year after year. Don't we need to have a provision to update those numbers?
Yes, absolutely. And so the draft policy that we're talking about, like we mentioned from the beginning, is the guidelines. So with the updates and reporting, which is on the last page, you would receive the actual numbers where we would stand. So I can present that in the same format which you see on the screen, those blocks, the colored blocks. Or it could be in any format that you would like to see. But as of right now, what I projected according to the policy, that that service will be close to 300 because it's a principal and interest of one year. The disaster recovery number is 250, it's going to be fixed once we attain this goal. Now again, those are targets, they're goals, we don't have them. So the 250 will stay, remain in, in that specific reserve balance. So if we go to assign the healthcare, we already have in place. We already have this number and it's already there. The community center, 415, we have that number, it's already there. Then the two proposed goals that we would like to establish is a capital reserve, which is 100. That number will be there and 100 will remain unless if we utilize the 100 for a specific unpredicted capital project. So then we will discuss how will we replenish that to bring it back to 100. Stabilization reserve will be 20% of general fund operating, operating budget. So it will vary a little bit slightly, but I see that's going to stay within a million, a million, million one, million two, it depends what's the budget.
It depends on what the budget is.
Right, right.
These are the numbers that I'm saying need to be updated with, with actuals. You talk about the health insurance, the recommended fund balance for this category is 40% of average last three years. Well, that average is going to change.
It would be, it would be close from 320, I would say maximum probably 330, 360, the maximum. So those numbers will be presented at the budget and at the audit. And once we'll look at where we need to be, we can start a plan to replenish that. But in average, it's 320, in which we already have in place.
And council member Burrell, you have, you're asking really good questions. This is, this is good stuff, but...
But, but if these numbers are going to be moving numbers, all I'm saying is there needs to be something in here that allows for them to be updated.
A sentence where we said that to present the balance and levels in front of mayor and council, which is the last page, during the annual budget adoption process and audit presentation, we shall forecast the end in fund balance and, and reserve levels.
Okay.
We'll present them to you as a detachment, but the policy itself as the body is actual guidelines, how we should come up to those balances.
I understand.
Does that answer your question, or do we need to adjust something?
No, go ahead.
Okay, I mean, we, we can come back, I know it's a lot of...
Yeah, let's come back.
Okay, it's a lot of information at one time, so, and ask away anybody that has a question. Council member Purnell, I believe you have your hand up.
Yeah, this, this is much simpler to understand and I applaud you guys for doing a good job of simplifying it a lot better than you did a year ago. Also, is, is any, in the 80 cents that you proposed, is, is, is there anything in there for this?
So in FY21, there is allocations currently within that budget. As long as those funds close the year, the way that they were projected in FY21, there will be inputs into the reserves. So the 80 cents...
Already included in the 80 cents.
Well, that was included in the 80 cents of FY21. And what, what I'm saying is that FY22, we're looking at an increase in the property tax base, which is going to give us an additional $130,000 approximately in revenue. We still have that shortfall to combat, but we are anticipating to make those allocations into the reserve accounts for FY21.
So you've included this in the 80 cents you proposed?
It's included in FY, in FY21's, the allocations have not been established for FY22.
There is nothing on the budget as budgeted amounts on fiscal 22 draft, nor there is nothing on fiscal 21 that would particularly go into specific level of reserve. We have a budgeted transfers from Stonewater and Sewer in condition if those two funds will do well for fiscal 21. We can discuss at the end of the year if that's going to be possible. I can tell you right now, the prediction for Stonewater is going to be struggle, Sewer possible, but smaller amount. So to say, that almost is probably not, we will not be able to transfer fiscal 21. Nor do we have a plan to touch fiscal 22 with 80 cents in your revenues to the goal, which is the yellow categories.
Now, the one caveat to that, I believe Natalie, is if you look at the FY21 budget, I believe there is the slots revenue payback for the police department that is slated to go back into reserves. There is no direct allocation as to where that's going to go, but it is slated to go back into reserves.
They're going to the unassigned balance, correct? Because we have had this unassigned balance in the past for the police department.
Correct, so if all things close, hopefully the way that they, they sure that's budgeted for FY21, we should still be at the, at or north, we should be really north of that $1 million of unspendable, at which time the council is going to have to make the determination as to where they would like to direct that cash flow. And my recommendation would be to first build up that stabilization reserve because it's really designed to help offset the economic volatility along with ensuring that we don't have to jeopardize services at a time when, when revenue may not come in where we need it to be.
Stabilization reserve would be the priority, correct?
I am really looking forward to this budget session because I can tell you, I do not understand what you are telling me.
It's okay, we're, we're here to answer questions, we're here to talk about it, that's, that's a good thing, so.
Now, now, these funding levels, they're not something that, that's, that's going to be, be budgeted. These are goals that we're going to work toward.
Correct, that's not something we have it on the budget in place to the budget. That's your goals that you will, we will try to achieve. And that is very important to know that goals, once they're achieved and once they're in place, it's a good backup, it's a good, it's a good foundation not to rely on a tax increase and not to rely on cutting the capital projects and have that in place, especially the capital reserve. If you have something unpredicted, a street repair or something else, we can advance those funds and do the project and then establish a plan to replenish that versus jumping into conclusion of where we're going to get the revenues. Or God forbid, something happened as a disaster or if we have something in that service that we need to cover for a year. So this is just like building a stable foundation for your home, a good roof above the general fund.
And I think that it's also important to note that we, we wouldn't, the reason that it's going to be presented to the council a couple of times a year is so that we can really start having that dialogue about, okay, if we understand that unspendable, unassigned spendable is, is increasing, right? We don't want to just allow that to accumulate and sit there. The idea is to hopefully direct that cash flow into a spot where we can start filling up some of these categories to, to achieve our goals. One area where you don't want to see a number necessarily go up is if you're looking at the diagram on the left-hand side where it says non-spendable inter-fund loans, that's a spot you want to pay attention to. And you want to make sure that that holds constant for the, for the most part of this discussion. If not, goes down, down's a good thing in that fund category.
And Mayor, I want to add one more thing for everybody's, for everybody that's listening. You know, this policy could be a, a short, simple sentence. You know, the mayor and council, the town of Berlin wished to establish a reserve fund in the amount of X months of operating budget, period. That can be done, but you're doing that with what Natalie has presented and you're putting more controls on it, okay? That's what I find critical with this in key, you're putting more controls. You're still trying to get to that same, that same number that you've heard year after year after year.
And it's important to understand that the disaster, I know Natalie said this, but disaster recovery and capital reserve are nowhere near what we need in those areas. If a true event occurred where we needed to tap into these, but there, this policy is not, and the, the goals set out within it are not designed to be prescriptive. They're not designed to have an answer for every issue, but it's designed to help us be able to buy time to react to whatever's taking place.
At the end of the day though, guys, to establish a reserve policy will cost more money. Am I right?
I don't understand what you're saying, you said...
It will be an additional budget item that we're going to put money aside. So it will be an additional expenditure in the budget.
You're not wrong in the fact that it will require us to divert that money in a mechanism. Does it, the allocation of money going into a reserve fund or filling one of these buckets does not necessarily have to take place? Like you wouldn't necessarily need to see a stabilization reserve line item. You could see an allocation to reserves and then the council could buy a motion or a resolution divert that money into these categories as they see fit. divert that money into these categories as they see fit.
But to add, if it's, it, will it cost money? Not necessarily. You have to have an approach to commit to those reserve levels. You can have an approach, um, like we mentioned, we can have an assigned spendable balance. And if we have available unassigned spendable, the first priority would be stabilization reserve, basically to transfer to the assigned of the total. If, if you wanna be more proactive and go and forward faster, it would be setting up a goal, um, within cer- certain amount of time and then budget for that to be, um, as a projection to, to have the balance completed. But in our situation, um, the, the, um, repeating game, the green ones is what we have already established. Um, the yellow is what we would like to see. And to get to those goals, it could take several years and we can plan and seek how we're gonna get there, but not necessarily have an expense account created on the next year budget.
Understood. If we want to attain those goals, we're gonna have to put some more money aside than we are currently doing. True or false? To, to, to achieve, let's, let's get a capital reserve, hundred thousand dollars. That's not in any budget we have currently, right?
We don't have that reserve in place, yes.
So it would cost a hun- trying to get to a hundred thousand dollars, you'd have to put some money aside in order to obtain that money.
We would have.
It has to come from somewhere. Okay, I think I understand.
And you're not entirely wrong, Councilmember Purnell. The, the difference is, is that we do have, uh, within FY twenty one, there are examples predominantly being, uh, that slot revenue that's being, uh, diverted into reserves currently. Now, we don't have many more years left on the repayment, uh, back to the general fund, uh, from that police department. But we, we are talking about some, uh, in some direction of cash flow that could be applied there.
But not for a few more years, because we've committed it to the police station. Once the police station paid for all the money's back in, yep, you can use those minds to go back in there. Understood.
Right, so actually, I, I think that's where the, the misunderstanding sometimes occurs. We, we borrowed and used the money within unassigned spendable to help pay a portion of that police department along with the money that had accumulated in that, uh, slot revenue category. And now what's being done, there, there is no financing on the books. The debt service of three hundred and ten thousand dollars that you see on this policy, a recommended policy uh, for principal and interest do not include a police department. There's no doubt on the books for that. So what's happening is, uh, that money is being taken in to repay ourselves for the police department. And then in FY twenty one, you see an example where that's being diverted to, uh, reserves. And I would say that that's probably a prudent strategy to help bolster some of these, uh, moving forward into FY twenty two and twenty three. And then I don't know how many more years we have of that repayment on the books. Three, so we'd be looking at twenty two, twenty three.
Hey, it's about. Yeah.
I'm, I'm sorry, I, I don't know if it was on my end or not, but you faded out.
Hundred percent. You know, I was here when we made the decisions, and I understand a hundred percent. I was there when we made all these decisions. Um, I, it's gonna cost some more money. What I'm seeing is, if we wanna go ahead and make these goals, I think are great goals. I think it's a great policy, and I think it's a good idea.
Gentlemen, you, you, Troy, you're not, you're not wrong, uh, but again, these are, these are goals. I think, I think the, the, um, uh, two point four million dollar question is how fast do we project that they'll be filled? And, you know, honestly, I can't give you an answer. If you, you know, you take, you, again, you take a look at like, the last FY, there were sixteen thousand dollars in, in unassigned spendable. This year, assuming that things go, you know, bu- budget goes as planned, there's a million dollars. Um, I, I don't know what twenty two is gonna bring. But if we, if we go with what we, if we have a perfect year as we did, you know, the past year, I mean, it'd be nice to see another million dollars in that unassigned spendable.
I think a million's a little too high, but I do think that we could, uh, we could grow that, uh, close to the one point five range, so.
But this is a goal, folks. It's not, I'm not gonna wa- wave a magic wand and, and all these buckets are filled overnight. It's not gonna happen.
And the, the other thing that's also important to understand is that, uh, w- we have some other troubles that aren't just lying within the general fund. We have some enterprise funds that really do need some attention, uh, especially this year. And, and we can't, like, I, I drew your attention to that un- non-spendable inter-fund loans. We can't continue to, to increase that number. That's gonna weigh down our goals and our objectives here with this, uh, draft policy. So we, we do have to get those under control, uh, and then that's gonna be the, the real derivative of increasing that unassigned spendable where we can begin to divert that into these areas where we're, we're recommending.
I don't understand why, uh, I don't understand why, why, why restricted is being included i- in this policy.
It is included because it's part of the general fund balance as a total, so it's just a layer of a balance. But in the same time, uh, restricted potentially could be unrestricted. Uh, we, we have unrestricted a portion of impact fees for street projects in the past. So those are the balances of the fund itself and within.
And you'll notice, you'll notice that these are the exact same things. We tried to really keep this. Uh, one thing was we, we made the policy easier to understand, but we also made it so that you can take this policy and match it right up to the audit. And you'll be able to see the same exact stuff. It's easy to follow. So the audit includes like those bar graphs that we see at the end that, that really uh, culminate all of these different categories, and it's the exact same stuff that PKS gives us in presentation. We use the exact same table to explain the purpose in each category. So it's, it's really simplified to help understand, uh, one, this, this goal that we're trying to achieve. But two, the benchmark that you can really say, all right, are we, are we hitting those benchmarks or not?
I don't understand. I don't understand why restricted is included in this policy.
And, and you're correct, Councilmember Burrell. You don't necessarily have to include it per se in the policy. Like Natalie, uh, Finance Director Slay said in the beginning, or I believe maybe even the town administrator, you'll, you'll notice that some municipalities have a very simplified version. It says, hey, look, we're gonna try and achieve a, a stabilization reserve of X. And they may apply a value to that. They may apply a percentage to that. But what we've done is try to take that one step further and say, all right, well, more than just needing a stabilization reserve, we believe that due to our proximity, that we also need a disaster recovery fund that could help mitigate some of those impacts of a natural disaster. And then we also see that, I think Councilmember Purnell brought this up earlier in our, our meeting, the need to invest in capital. And sometimes that, that capital investment requires a little bit more, uh, of an in-kind or a contribution, and, and that really gives us the ability to tap into that with that capital reserve. So you'll notice that there are some things that we could really get by with a much more slim, uh, and, and narrow policy, but this one is designed for, for looking into the future.
And the, and the other thing I did real quick, it, it makes me think, if you take a look at the slide again that's presented, if Natalie were to have filled in this, the, the slot revenue and the impact fees, again, they vary at the end of each FY. And you take it up, and, and I apologize, but I am colorblind. Whatever color those two blocks are, the healthcare and the community center, those monies are real monies that you, you know, you know what that number is. You're gonna know. It's not a, it's not a guess. I mean, those numbers are there. The money's there. It's in the bank, if you will. Um, and then the, the, the opposite color, those are attainable. Um, and, and they're gonna change, because right, right now, we're, you know, the, 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 the debt service, the disaster recovery, the stabilization reserve, and the capital reserve, I can help you add all those numbers up right now, what they truly are. They're all zero. So what this, what this sheet does for me, and I hope it does the same for you all, it gives you, if those, if those categories were all filled in with a true number, it tells you where your money is.
But it also paints a reality of where we are.
That's right.
And that reality is that, say, the, the need for the stabilization reserve, right? So that's the one that we talk about wanting to fill first. It's under assigned. The, the need for that exists because the revenue projections are projections. They're not certainty. Uh, and if you look at, I mean, this year has been a fine example of, of the impacts that can be placed on us. Um, if, if that holds true, and the only thing we have is unassigned spendable, we're not in a good place, and we're not prepared. So we, we really need to start looking at, how do we get the town of Berlin on a level playing field and a spot where we can say, all right, we're comfortable, and we can handle not everything that comes our way, but at least handle the things that do come our way a little bit better.
So the bottom line of what's here, with the exception of the restricted that we don't have numbers for, we're gonna work toward establishing a reserve of two point four million dollars.
Correct, but the first goal for us, the short-term goal for this council and this administration is the stabilization reserve of twenty percent of our operating expenditures, which is benchmarked at this moment to be about one, one point one million dollars. That's where we need to go first.
Okay, got that.
Do we have any other questions or comments? All right, um, so if we don't have any mo- I don't know, I think we talked about a couple modifications. We discussed a couple other options, but I didn't hear anything concrete. And if there isn't anything that needs to be amended, that's, that is concrete, then what's the process for us to move forward with establishing this draft policy?
Mayor, we'll need, if, if the council chooses to move forward with this, we need a motion.
Does it?
I don't want to move forward with, with this thing being, being, being drafted. I think it should, should be brought back to us in, in the final version, a- a- and that version be acted upon.
I agree with Councilmember Burrell. Uh, Town Attorney David Gaskell, do we need to do any advertising or public hearings associated with this? Or is this, uh, a council-level decision?
It's a council-level decision. You don't need to do any of that.
Okay, I would agree with, uh, Councilmember Burrell, then. If, if there aren't any changes, or if you digest this information this evening and, and you see an edit that needs to be made or recommended, uh, go ahead and pass that along. If not, uh, what we'll plan on doing is bringing this back to the council, uh, for a formal, uh, action in our next meeting. All right, so let's see here. We are on to, uh, the town administrator's report. Uh, Town Administrator Fleetwood, take it away.
Well, I'm parched right now. I can tell you my head hurts, so hopefully yours doesn't hurt as bad as mine. I do appreciate everyone, uh, tonight, that the input, irregardless of what questions you ask, we've heard it back in elementary school. There's no stupid question, and, and, and everybody's comments tonight for every, uh, item has been, uh, I can tell you greatly, uh, appreciated, uh, by me. Things that I, I wish to report very quickly, I wanna remind everyone that, uh, Public Works Superintendent Dave Whedon, um, will be retiring at the end of March. We are having a retirement ceremony, if you will, uh, very low-keyed at the Public Works Yard on the twenty ninth. That's a Monday. Uh, at twelve noon, uh, so you're more than welcome if you wanna stop in and wish him well. He's not going far, just down to Newark, but, um, the twenty ninth at twelve noon, uh, so again, if you can make that, I would greatly appreciate it. We, as I mentioned, uh, an hour or so ago, at the end of this week, we will meet, be meeting the mayor, Natalie, myself, and department heads uh, individually to, to go over their budgets again. Uh, I do wish to inform you publicly that the, the town of Berlin did, in fact, receive a Maryland Energy Administration goal, or I'm sorry, a, um, grant, excuse me, uh, for a solar array, a rooftop mounted solar array, a forty eight point seven five megawatt uh, system, uh, in the amount of a hundred and twenty two thousand, three hundred and seventy five dollars. Uh, again, just for what it's worth, it, it means a lot to me. We were the first to apply. We were the first to receive approval. Uh, as far as the start date on that, that's, uh, to be announced, uh, but I, I envision that happening fairly soon. When it, uh, when we do get word that it's, it's going to begin, we'll put that out, and again, it's gonna be mounted uh, down on the Schofield Street, uh, substation on the, uh, on the, uh, the main building roof. So look forward to that happening. I do wish to share that you see that Dave Inglehart and Tim Lawrence are both not on this this evening. Uh, Dave is under the weather, and Tim, uh, put him in your prayers, and his brother in your prayers. Um, Tim is, um, right now, uh, out of, out of network, if you will. He's over in the northern Virginia area with his brother. Um, and that concludes my report. Are there any questions of me? Okay, departmental reports. Natalie, anything further?
Um, no, thank you. We're just going into the budget, and I will send this report as I promised earlier.
Kelsey?
No, not tonight.
Uh, Mary?
I don't have anything this evening. Thank you.
Chief Downing?
Good evening, everyone. I would start with, um, Natalie and Kelsey have been working very diligently and hard with this budget. Um, I would make the statement that we've been working with this budget for over two months. And I know that we've actually sent numbers to Kelsey, and they've been actually, they're redone two and three times. We appreciate all that hard work. And I've been doing budgets for twenty five years. And, uh, this is probably the most detailed budget we'll ever have. When you say bare bones, and you have to say detail, this is what you're gonna get. Uh, we've been waiting for the meeting with the mayor, um, so Thursday, we're ready to go ahead and show them what we do have. But, uh, a- again, they've done a great job to say what we need to go ahead and do, and, uh, and we understand the situation. And, uh, hopefully, the work that everybody has put in will turn out a good product. For the police department, we've actually been working with the schools very hard, and, uh, we've been doing far drills, um, with today being the first day back of full school. Um, they had some concerns, and we worked with, um, plans from last week until now, and everything was as smooth as it could be, uh, with the traffic and the, the different issues that they thought might arise. So we have to say thank you to, uh, our school partners and administration for, for doing that. And we have actually, if they had opportunity to work and go over some drills and some, uh, safety plans with schools also. That is my report for this evening.
Okay, uh, Jimmy?
Hello. Uh, Public Works Crews, uh, the last couple of weeks, the last two weeks, we worked at, uh, the Welcome Center, and we power washed the front of the Welcome Center and, and the sidewalk, put new coats of paint on the front of the poles and stuff at the Welcome Center to give it a fresh appearance, and, um, uh, Ms. Ivy worked with, uh, some signage that we put some new signage up throughout town. Met with Mike Wiley, and we walked all the parks on future projects. And, um, we did find a safety issue at the Heron Parkway, which Public Works Crew went and addressed right away. Uh, last we are, this week, we are getting mulch, and we're gonna start getting the parks cleaned up now that the weather has turned warmer, and we'll be able to get into the park areas and get the areas cleaned up. Thank you, Jeff.
Okay. Ivy?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Just a couple of things tonight. Uh, the Main Street, the Maryland Main Street Grant that we received a couple of weeks ago, we've already received, uh, thirty-plus applications from our downtown businesses for a variety of things that will help them, uh, take them through the, the next year or so. So I'm, I'm really looking forward to, um, having all the businesses that have not applied yet as a reminder to please get your applications into me by the, uh, by March nineteenth. Um, been attending a variety of conferences with the state of Maryland for the upcoming farmers market that'll start on Sunday, May second. Uh, so the rules are still in place. COVID and CDC guidelines are still in place. Uh, Maryland Department of Agriculture has actually offered, uh, some free, uh, signage and information, uh, for this year. So, uh, went ahead and signed us up for that. And then, um, as part of the, um, our, uh, Arts and Entertainment District, we're going to be sending out a survey to all the residents and business. we're going to be sending out a survey to all the residents and business owners asking basically what, what everyone wants with our Arts Entertainment District. People don't realize that it extends from the downtown area all the way over through Flower Street. So we are going to be asking what, what people want their, their town to be for the next few years. And then stop over at the Welcome Center. Thanks to Jimmy and the guys for, for painting the outside. It really needed it. And we worked at, on the inside also. We have some new exhibits. So we're open now, ten to four, so come on in and stop by. And that's the end of my report.
Thank you, Ivy. Jamie?
Um, I have nothing. Thank you.
Hey, Mayor, that concludes departmental reports.
Thank you. Any questions for any of our department heads that are with us this evening? All right, so we'll move on to agenda item number nine, which are comments from the mayor. Last Tuesday, I went to the Worcester County Commissioners Meeting and requested our FY twenty two grant request. We requested funding for the police department, fire department, EMS. Also, in addition to those services, we requested funding for possible match for Rails to Trails program, which utilizes the easement along the existing railroad. We asked for some funding for a community center feasibility study and community planning associated with that. And we asked for some funding for the Independence Day Firework Show, which typically took place at Heron Park. And FY twenty two was scheduled to move over to the northern Worcester County Athletic Fields and anticipating that it won't be held at the same location that we wanted to hold it in FY twenty one and FY twenty two. So we are asking for some funding from the commissioners for that as well. Typically, we don't hear from the commissioners for a little while, maybe another month or so. But once we do find out, we'll definitely make sure the council's aware. Any questions about any of that? All right, we'll move on to the comments from the council and we'll start with the Hollywood, Hollywood Squares. Councilmember Purnell, you're up.
I have nothing.
Thank you. Councilmember Burrell?
I had a concern about potholes and, and the condition of a street, a bull and circle. But, but that Jeff is looking into that for me and I do appreciate it, Jeff.
Yes, sir, that, I'm waiting on Dave Inglehart tomorrow just to confirm whether that is a, whether it's a private lane or whether it's a, a town, a street. And then we'll react accordingly. And Jimmy and I have had a pretty good discussion about that. So once I get the confirmation on who owns it, we're, we're going to do the right thing. I can assure you that. But I'll follow up with you on it as soon as I have that answer.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Burrell. Councilmember Ner?
Nothing.
Councilmember Nichols?
Wow, I was just writing my list, so I didn't forget anything. First off, welcome Jimmy Charles. Great job jumping right in to the role and stepping in. We appreciate everything you're doing, all the nice things you've done over at the Welcome Center. It can, we see it. Thank you. It's greatly appreciated. You're a great addition to the, to the team. Mr. Mayor, thanks again for the presentation you gave to the commissioners last Tuesday. Greatly appreciate it. We hope that we hear good things from that group in regards to what we've asked about. The comments made by Kat in regards to the town of Berlin, the article about the peak shavings and how great Tim and the electric utilities have done, that's great information that I hope that the whole town reads and appreciates how much work and effort has been put into lowering our utility or our electric rates and what have you. So good stuff with that. I hope everyone reads it. My heart goes out to Tim and his family. Last thing, it was a good time hanging out. Let's restore the shore this weekend, cleaning up the Flower Street, Bay Street area and to actually get out into some fresh air and see the neighborhood and the things that the state highway has planned. So seeing those things and what Tim and the crew has been working with those guys on, it's good to see the markers, the spray on the, in the areas where things are happening. And thanks, Jeff, for reaching out to that business owner about cleanup today. Thank you, thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Nichols. Councilmember Ors?
I have nothing tonight. Thank you.
All right, thank you. We'll move on to comments from the public. Mary, do we have any written comments from the public?
We did not have any comments that we received prior to the meeting, however, during the meeting, we had a question posted from Gina Valong. Her, well, it's a combination of statement and question. I'm confused about the meeting on the fifteenth. I thought the deadline was only for presentations, not comments. Can you clarify, will be allowed, will we be allowed to say our opinion? I think the confusion here might be, yes, there was a deadline set for those who were interested in actually making a presentation. However, there will also be time allocated just for general comments from the public. So you will be allowed to, to speak in addition to a presentation time.
And just to elaborate on that a little bit, we did send out some information requesting the presentations in advance and for you to sign up for that. We also stated that you do not need to sign up for public comment. So anybody that wants to provide public comment, there will be opportunity to do so, as Mary said. But the presentations will come first and then we'll, then we'll get into all the other public comment. So that's a, it's a very good question. Do we have anybody that's in attendance that would like to ask a question via Zoom?
If so, to those who are in here in an attendee capacity, you should have an option to raise your hand and we will see that and enable you to speak. Does not appear so.
All right, so we will move on. Do we have any questions or comments from the press?
Exactly. Before you move on, do you, do you read the comments on the Facebook?
We don't address the questions on Facebook in this setting currently, but when we get back to in person on the twenty second, and that's when the comments from Facebook would be accepted.
For the public hearing?
Well, for the pub, yeah, you're right. We switch back to in-person written comments before a deadline, so. Thank you. That's a, that's a good question, Councilmember Ner. All right, so no questions for, or comments from the press. Councilmember Burrell, you're up.
Move to a juror.
And all in favor?
Second.
Thank you, everybody. Have a good evening and we'll see each other on the fifteenth.
Thanks all. I appreciate your time. Have a good night.